This time I'd like to call the Hamilton County Council Meeting to order. Madam Auditor, would you note the presence of a quorum?
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum with Fred Glenn being absent tonight.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. If you all stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Council Mackey.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance today as we govern our county and our various areas within the county to do, preserve our freedoms and the things that we love in this country. We ask that you be with the people of the Ukraine and everyone around the world who is supporting personal freedom, and let us not lose sight of that importance in our governance today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, if everybody's had a chance to read the minutes from the February 16th, 2022 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, I'd entertain a motion if everybody's had a chance to read the minutes of March 2nd, 2022, I would entertain that motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on in your agenda, item five is public comments. Is there one, anyone here in the audience who would like to come to the podium and speak? Sing none? Okay, we have one gentleman. I will remind you that this evening, if you can hold your comments to at least two minutes. Thank you. Yes, if you'll time that, please. Thank you. Go ahead if you'll introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Chad Carmichael, resident of Fishers. Thank you for allowing comment today. I wanted to thank the council for acting swiftly on the library issue. Thanks for your help, and we're not done yet. We need someone who's outspoken on the library board, who is not afraid to stand up for the values of our county, and frankly, to hold Edra Waterman, the library director accountable for her gross incompetence in promoting pornography to 11-year-olds. It doesn't please me to say that. Appointing a new board member is a great first step, and I thank you for it. But it isn't going to solve the problem immediately, and whoever fills the role is going to have to stand firm. It's going to have to take positions that attract negative attention from the small group of activists who, for some reason, deeply desire to promote these kinds of materials to minors. I don't relate to it, but that's the way it is. If we get someone to work for change at the library against this opposition, I believe that we will see that change in time. But in the short term, it's going to be a fight, and it's going to require bravery and strength. So I'm asking you to please take this into account as you choose your appointment. I thank you again for taking action on this. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, thank you. Kim Logan. I'm a resident of Fishers of 33 years. And last summer, late fall or early fall, I started going to the library board meetings in Fishers. And I was shocked at some of the things I was seeing in the library. Books that I was finding, and they were pornography. If I was at work and I showed that book, or my boss had that book on his desk, he'd have been fired. This is the stuff that's in the teen section, and through a lot of conversations with the library board, we have gotten them to make some changes, which is great. So I also will reiterate what Chad said, as far as needing somebody on this board. It is going to look out for our children. You had a prayer earlier, and you know, we talk about doing the right thing. And I appreciate that so much because in the Bible, it says, if you put a millstone around your neck and jump in a lake, it's better than what leading people astray. And that is what the current librarian is doing, Edra Waterman. She is leading children astray. This is not about burning books. This is not about banning books. This is about being age-appropriate. We can seek this out in online and everything kids can if they want to, but having this available in our libraries at these young ages is completely inappropriate. So I do appreciate you appointing someone, and I, like Chad, also hope you will appoint somebody that is looking out for our children. They have clearly an agenda by the things that they are promoting, and it's really disturbing. And I hope that you will take all of this into consideration. I really do appreciate it. I really want to see the library representative of all people, not just a certain select group of people. I think that that's what it is for me. When I was a young mom and had kids, I thought the library is a safe place. It is not. I have grandchildren. I told my daughter, when you go to the library, you have to look at every, you can't just let your kids wander. There is so much filth in that library. We would like to see the librarians change. We'd also like to see the librarians, yes, I'll wrap it up. I'd like to see the board to be more involved. There's one person that's involved in that library board today. The other six just sit there and do whatever Edra says. We need engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience?
Hi, good evening. My name's Kathy Harege. And I've been a resident of Hamilton County for 19 years and have lived in Fishers for 14 years, and have been a library user and advocate since moving here. I recently started attending the library board meetings last September and have since been attending these meetings regularly. I started attending the meetings after discovering several books in the teen zone at the Fishers Library, which met the legal definition of obscenity. I believe you would be shocked to see some of these books where 11-year-old children can peruse the area. The discovery of obscene books by myself and many other concerned parents created increased attention and focus on the public library in the community, and more parents began attending the board meetings. As of February, the board and library director have made a new plan to move these books to the adult section. The question remains why these books were housed in the teen section to begin with, and the fact that the board did not hold any employee accountable, and the concern that this new policy will be enacted or not. One of my biggest takeaways from attending these recent meetings is how clumsy and dysfunctional the board seems to operate. They do not seem knowledgeable on many topics discussed, and there's only one board member who asks questions and tries to initiate dialogue among the other members. We need board members who are truly interested in the community and the people that they serve. A solid board consists of great and qualified members, and is the quality of each individual board member that determines whether or not the board will be successful. We need a member who possesses these critical skills required to be an effective board member, dedicated and committed to maintain unwavering interest to achieve the goals and mission of the library. Two, strong leadership skills that will positively influence others, has an upbeat personality that will instill some much-needed energy to the board. Three, does not shy away from difficult conversations or topics, and knows how to engage people to facilitate debate and decisions.
Thank you.
We need to hold themselves and the board and the library director accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Thank you all. Moving on on our agenda. Committee of Officer Reports. I just have one item. I did get to attend the Ag Day at the 4-H Grounds. It was a well-attended event. Over 2,500 parents and children went through the facility. It was really a neat day there, so glad I got to attend. Moving on to the Vice President.
Yeah, I have two items. First is, I got, I believe I received a lot of support for the application process that we put in for the Hamilton East Public Library in trying to create more of an automated process that allows for these opportunities to be widely publicized and make sure that we get the interest from the community. As I've heard, we've got, on that response, we had upwards of eight to 17, depending on who you talk to and respondents, but that's the most I think we've gotten for any appointment since I've been on the council. So that was positive. And I think moving forward, with the consensus of the group, I'm going to move forward with IAS to build these types of processes within the rest of the appointments and work with the Auditor's Office on how we can make this so that we're not inundated with 150 emails, but we have something that can be captured and reproduced in a report setting so that we have all the information.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate all the effort you put into this. This is probably a little long overdue, and I appreciate all your energy moving forward on this, so thank you.
No problem. Second thing, as you know, I sit on the Hamilton County Swallow Water District. I'm the liaison officer, and I get, it's really exciting stuff, I want you to know. But who really can talk about it is Claire Lane, who's been coming forward and talking, give us a little update on, they have an invasive species awareness week that's coming up, and she's bringing a trash can for all the leftover paper that we have, or something else. Claire?
Hi, thanks. Sorry, I'm a little froggy. It's not COVID. Why would you have to say that? And I brought a bucket. I'm sure no one's ever brought a bucket. But yeah, we have a lot going on at the district. Spring, of course, it's a really crazy season. But we have coming up the Hamilton County Invasive Species Awareness Week, April 16th through the 23rd, and that's an initiative of our Hamilton County Invasives Partnership, HIP, program. So we have a lot happening with that. Weed wrangle, volunteer events. We have our strike team that does targeted invasive species work, mostly at parks properties throughout the county. But something cool that we're initiating this year is what we call our Invasives Bucket Challenge. Fill up to fight invasives. So we have these buckets with some garlic mustard info on them we have available at the office, and then Noblesville and Fishers Parks Departments are distributing some as well. So the idea is that people will take the buckets and use them in their invasive species control efforts, and then when it's full, they'll take their picture and post it on their social media and tag HIP and use the hashtag #invasivesbucketchallenge, and that will enter them to win some cool prizes from us in the Parks Department. And then the challenge part is also that hopefully they will tag friends and neighbors or people in their neighborhood and challenge them to work on invasive species or join a volunteer event as well. So kind of just a different fun educational thing we're trying to do this year that we're excited about. The other thing I wanted to mention that we've been working on this year is a new GIS, Geographic Information Systems project. We noticed that Carmel Parks had a GIS system they were using for invasives, and our county parks department was also kind of sorting out what they wanted to do. So we really saw an opportunity for HIP to kind of step in, and we saw the need for a broader platform that would cover the entire county. Because you guys know that these, you know, these invasive species or natural resources issues aren't specific to any park or any property, any city or even any county, really. So the power in that information really comes from having information from across the county in one place. So in late 2021, we reached out to Joanne and kind of introduced them to the idea, and she was immediately right on board and brought in Travis Cole. And in early January 2022, we had an initial meeting kind of selling the vision for this with amongst our HIP partners, the Parks Departments primarily, but Central Indiana Land Trust, Forestry, Stormwater, all of those guys. And I think they immediately agreed, you know, saw the value as well. So we started to get down to work on it. You know, weekly meetings, really kind of building what this platform would look like. And over the last few months, we've built something that tracks all of the areas that have had an invasive species survey. It tracks what species were found where. A really important component is that it tracks what we call early detection and rapid response species. So it'll send an alert whenever somebody logs one of those species that are of a high concern, so things that haven't been found here previously but could cause a lot of harm to agriculture or Parks Departments, private property. It's really exciting. And then it also is able to track all of the management and control applications as well, so we can see across the county how, where things are moving, identify corridors that things are going through, collaborate with the Highway Department, and also identify what control methods are working, where they're working, where they're not working, what needs to be done differently. And then, of course, everybody knows, you know, the value of maps as an educational tool will be really powerful as well. So it's really exciting. I know I've submitted two abstracts to speak at two different conferences on it. I know Travis has submitted one for a GIS conference as well. And it's just been, I can't believe that we've come so far on it already. We actually launched the program for use this spring, two weeks ago. I cannot believe that we were able to come up with something that fast.
That's what the good leadership over, you've been putting forward. Can this information be found on the website?
Yeah, yeah. Well, this can. The GIS stuff is just with us. But I just want to say that no other county in the state has something like this. So it's something that's really special, and I think a really powerful way to show the collaboration between all the different partners, but also the departments within the county. County Parks and the GIS team in the district. We've just been able to work together really beautifully to produce something that I think is going to have a really big impact in the county. It's really exciting.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Claire.
Yeah, if you need a bucket, come see us.
Hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Finance Committee.
We did not have a finance committee meeting. We got one coming up in the next week or so. I do want to report to you from the ARPA Committee that we've tentatively committed 25 million of our next 32 million that we're supposed to get in May to the Baker's Corner project. They needed that tentative approval at our last meeting to move forward. So some of the township applications that were in front of us got put on hold or tabled for more information. So the long and the short of it, even after we get the next 32, everything but about 5 million is already committed. That's the long and short of it.
Okay. Anything else on finance?
No.
Okay. Moving on. Personnel. We did not meet, although we will have other items further in our agenda.
You skipped Highway.
We had a poll.
Highway. I did skip Highway. Highway.
We have several items we didn't meet. We're going to have items that we will address later in the agenda.
Okay, moving on. Miscellaneous. Anything under miscellaneous?
No, sir.
Saying none, unfinished. Table business. I would entertain a motion to untable funding for the Shepherd's Center Counseling Program.
Motion to untable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the $50,000 grants for Shepherd Center Counseling.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to new business. Approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. I've got my pen here. Thank you.
Ken, on your next item, there were 17 emails received and seven applicants.
17 and the seven that filled out the paperwork?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the HEPL Board Appointment.
I would motion to approve for the appointment of Tiffany Dittelson.
I'll second.
She is here. If anybody has any questions or...
Is that for the open seat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to make a motion for another person, too.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor. So we can have some, this is open for conversation now, so.
Well, the way it works is first person up gets the vote.
Right. So there's a motion right on the table, right? Unless you, is there another way you wanted to do it, sorry?
You're reinventing the wheel, so.
I'm reinventing the wheel?
Yeah. With the application process, we've got all these applications, but first person speaks up, gets the vote.
Well, I think one of the things that I know I could speak for myself, like, and I believe all of us have looked through all those applications, and there were quite a few very qualified people. It was a hard choice to make, to be honest. So I know every one of us comes to it a little differently. I was looking at experience with library and also experience community service-wide. Individual who is, who isn't there for a specific agenda because the issue today isn't going to be the issue that's the issue a year from now or three years from now. It's going to be somebody who is looking at the betterment of the library in the long term. So I think we all looked at them. And so if the person that, Tiffany, who is up for right now, who is the motion, if she doesn't pass, then we go on to the next person.
Well, I know how it works.
Well, and I would...
That's why I asked, is there a different process that you'd like? That's why I asked, is there a different process that you'd like? I mean, is there, you're saying you pick someone?
A bunch of applications, but the first person speaks up gets the vote.
Um, so I, I think what, what you're asking me for is, um, as part of the process, and this is kind of off topic, but I'll, I'll, I'll respond to that. Uh, part of what I'm gonna be working with, with the Auditor's Office and, and with I S is, is how we can automate this process and create a better forum for um, reviewing applications going forward and provide the opportunities in front of council. But a- as you said, I'm not, I can't re, this is the process right now that exists. We're gonna try and, and make it, improve it. I can tell you that the reason I looked through all the applications, it was important to me. I, I went to the meetings. I wanted to find someone that was going to represent the conservative values that I hold dear. Um, but also can be representative of their community. And um, when I see someone that has, that's conservative, that is, is from that, you know, the geographic boundaries of that area, obviously, close in the Fisher's area there. That's also served our country in the Air Force, worked in, in libraries during her service and continues to serve in, in our county. From me and my perspective, that's someone that I want to make sure that we are providing an opportunity to continue that service. And that can only be a positive for our county.
I, I think what.
We have this person that, that Amy has just nominated, and then who's our other representative?
Heather Lee, who's from Fisher's. So as it stands right now, there are four from Noblesville, two from Fisher's, and we have two.
And they're both, this, the one that's on now is from Fisher's?
Correct.
And the one you've just nominated is.
As it stands right now, there are four is from Fisher's. There are four.
So there'll be nobody from Noblesville.
There are four members currently today from Noblesville that sit on that, on that board. There are two from Fisher's and there's one empty seat. So in order to, if you think about it from a population standpoint, I can't say where the other two that are from Noblesville are. They're the commissioners. I don't know. To me, that doesn't matter. I think the person that you have in mind is great as well. That, it just comes down to.
Who speaks first?
Kind of. That's how, that's how it's been.
So you can, you can.
You've been here longest, you know that.
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm just bringing it up. So you can dump all your process. It all comes down to who speaks first.
No, we have it formalized.
No, no, hold on, I, I think, but, but I want to work through a process that's gonna improve how this is done. I, if, to respond, I, I can't change what it is today, but what I'd like to see happen is an opportunity for us to uh, shortlist and have people come forward and speak that and, and then be able to vote. But again, that, that's a process related issue that needs to go through.
I mean, if it weren't for him, this wouldn't be what happened. It would have been two month, last month, and we would have called it and it would have been a person and there would have been no discussion.
Okay, so if I can speak for just a moment.
Sure.
I think what Brad's trying to say, the way Robert's Rules of Order reads is basically the way the first person brings it up, that's where it goes.
It is.
And I get the feeling that not everybody here likes the way that Robert rules.
Well, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to work with Robert's Rules of Order because there is nothing else to replace it. And I'm certainly aware, the first person that speaks gets the vote first, and as long as they get the votes, they're in. Which is fine with me. I understand it. I understand how it works. I'm just bringing it up. That's how it works. You can make all the process you want, it's still the first person that speaks.
Currently.
So let's vote.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments?
Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed as well. Moving on.
Did you want her to introduce herself to you since you did that way then?
Absolutely.
Please come forward.
So that being the case, will we in the future have like a meeting with our members to have a discussion with them?
I think we've been trying to get the rules in place if.
You can have an executive session where you go ahead and talk to many applicants and the council could then refine it down to three applicants. You could set up the procedure then, then the.
No, 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 no. We've alre, we've already got our members. I'm saying we should speak to the ones that we appoint to relay to them in person what we expect.
Absolutely. And, and that's part of what that application spells out. It spelled out expect, um, um, the expectations, roles and responsibilities that we anticipate out of all of our points. And one of the clear things in there is, in this one, I'm sure Tiffany can speak to it, which was representing the, the uh, overwhelming of values of our, our community, as well as responding to the council when, when, when called upon.
Right, so are we planning on doing that?
I, I think we, I mean, I can speak for myself saying we have had lengthy amounts of communication that have been distributed to council from Heather Lee, as an example. This would be our new appointment, so I think the expectation would be.
I'm asking the president, are we planning on meeting in person with our board appointments?
We have nothing set forth at this time. I have no problem if that's the pleasure of the councils, we move forward.
I think we should.
Is, is, is that something you'd like me to put in with, with Robin and, and when we come up with a process and then we can present that and have the whole group come together? It'll be something done this summer before we go into our next round of appointments this fall.
Just from sitting here tonight, it sounds like we need to get, get organized for the next board appointments. So if that's the pleasure.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Would you all like to vote on that? Somebody like to make a motion?
I don't know if we have.
No, I, I have to just do it.
I can. Hi Tiffany.
Mr. President, everyone. Uh, my name is Tiffany Dittelson. I've lived in Fisher's for the last fourteen years. I'm an Air Force veteran and during my time in the military, I was responsible for, uh, for libraries. Um, when I was in the Azores, we had the best, um, library in the Air Force. I understand the role that they play in the communities for educating, entertaining and informing people. Um, I'm the past P T O president at my daughter's school. She went to Geis Montessori. Um, I'm a Sunday school teacher at Saint Matthews Catholic Church. I've also been on the board at Catholic Charities for the last eight years. Um, I'm currently one of the co-chair for the Fisher's G O P Club. So I certainly um, do bring a lot to the table. Uh, very excited for this opportunity to serve my county. So thank you so very much.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for, for offering to serve.
And thank you for all the applicants. Honestly, we, we want, there's, there's gonna be more opportunities to serve. And I think that that's, that, that, as we go forward. And I, and I hope that other bodies like ours that have appointments like this are looking at processes in place that can provide these opportunities across the board.
Thank you. And moving on, uh, Grant Application and Transfers. One, number one on your agenda is Fund eight-two-two-one. It's a F W H A grant application appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Give me just a second here, did I sign some paperwork? Thank you. Okay, moving on, Fund eight-two-seven-six. Nine, nine-seven-point-zero-six-seven, F F Y two thousand twenty-one, S H S P E O C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, number three. Fund eight-two-seven-seven-nine-seven-point-zero-six-seven, F F W two thousand twenty-one, S H S P Soft Target. Two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
These are just the grants appropriations.
Grant appropriations. Do we get a motion in a second?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last one for the grant appropriation is Fund eight-two-seven-eight-nine-seven-zero-four-two, F F Y two-zero-two-one, Emergency Management Performance, forty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We got four more.
I do see that now. Moving on to item five, Fund eight-two-seven-nine-nine-seven-point-zero-four-two. It's Emergency Managed Performance Grant Reimbursement. Eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, Fund eight-nine-zero-six, I C J one, two thousand twenty Grant Transfer.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item seven, Fund eight-nine-five-zero. It's an ARPA transfer for three million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
So moved.
Second. This is like I talked to you about last month. Two and a half million out of the one we already got and two and a half million out of the one we're gonna get is for a Sunday
attainable.
Um, affordable housing project. And the rest of it is drainage projects.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item D. It's a Resolution C C zero-four dash zero-six dash two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one. It's a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the Communications Center project.
Somebody want to talk about this one?
I'm motion approved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
So this is giving us, uh, this gives, uh, the county the ability to move forward and negotiate uh, the purchase of property for a future nine-one-one communications R. They would then have.
Just, just any old place or what?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, I'm not sure if it's, if it's shared in, in the documents, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that is public or not. Since it's, we'll say, here's Dan Stevens.
The property is, I think, described in your resolution.
Okay, so it is like, okay.
Approved, the location, it's, it's actually on the east side of thirty-seven, next to the current six hundred foot tower.
So it's just a authorization to negotiate?
It's the authorization to um, get appraisals on the property. Which is the first step in a negotiation.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Mr. President, can you go back to item eight? The Foreign Language Interpreter Grant?
Yeah, we missed it.
No, that was the one that, well, at least Ken had made the motion and I had seconded on that one. And then I don't know how it got.
Well, that was the ARPA.
That was the ARPA. Eight, eight wasn't, I'm looking through our packet, I didn't.
Let's just redo it.
Okay, you want to redo item eight? Is that correct, Brad? Item eight, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Fund nine-one-two-two, the Foreign Language Interpreter Grant. Fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on this? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for catching that. Uh, upcoming, upcoming highway funding needs. I do have some handouts here from our Highway Committee. We met yesterday. And I have one more to hand out as well. Two there. And one for Brad. This way.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Don. Uh, the first one is, uh, two hundred and seventy-sixth Street from Dunbar Road to U S thirty-one. And it, uh, if you want to breathe through this, this is stuff that we've discussed. Uh, Brad, would you like to come up? Maybe clarify this? We'll start with the, the one on two hundred and seventy-sixth and Dunbar.
These are both tied to the May letting, um, is that correct?
Yes. The purpose of the discussion tonight is to make sure we have our SARS line, so to speak, for these two projects that are in the N dot May letting currently. And the one at two seventy-sixth Street, uh, Dunbar Road to U S thirty-one. Uh, this segment is a segment of the county road that leads into the new interchange that N dot is constructing at two seventy-sixth Street and U S thirty-one. And so what we did was we had an agreement with N dot that this segment of the road would be incorporated into that major project. So our financial commitment toward this is three point two-two million dollars. Of that, we are responsible for the engineering and the construction. N dot is covering for the county the environmental portion of that, uh, our segment, as well as they'll administer the letting process. They're handling the design, um, process and they will do the construction inspection for us. Now, that is in a TIF area. And I want to make one correction that Robin pointed out to me. On the third bullet point there, it says there's eighty-seven-five-ten left in appropriation. That's not really quite true. There's eighty-seven-five-ten left in cash. But this isn't a TIF area. We had, uh, back in August, got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that TIF in order for us to procure the right of way, which we did. And that eighty-seven-five-ten is the balance that was not used out of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a part of the money that is available, uh, toward this cost. The actual TIF cash balance, uh, is seven sixty-nine, nine sixty-one, eighty-five. If you choose to use the TIF funds toward this cost, those are two pots of money that could be tapped. I did talk to Mr. Howard this afternoon. He did confirm that this project is, is eligible to use the TIF monies. And so that's, um, been confirmed by him. And as we go farther down, a second to the bottom bullet point. Last year, we thought we were going to be invoiced for some engineering fees, um, in advance, but we were not. So we had gotten some money, uh, three hundred and eighty-five thousand that was put into a forty-nine oh seven line item. And those were not used, but they were encumbered. So there's three hundred and eighty-five thousand that could also go toward the cost. So if you choose to use the TIF and you subtract off those three items, the balance of funding needed is about two million dollars, just shy of two million dollars.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Now, I had, I had this conversation with Brad a few days ago and it kind of alerted me. This is not in the highway budget and it's not been identified as a project for finance to try to figure out where we're gonna get the money. I'm not opposed to this project, but it just kind of.
Popped up.
Well, my question was about finance too. I, this was a question I had, I mentioned that to you too, but.
So I'm looking at the Highway Committee. What are we gonna do in the past and going forward so we don't have these things fall out of the sky?
Well, we have been, since the start of the year, sharing and Mr. Davis's department developed a very nice spreadsheet. They've been updating it monthly and giving it to us so every week we can all, all see it. This one, I believe, has been on that spreadsheet.
It's been, especially, we've been doing that actually since October.
Yeah, it's been and been.
That's where I thought it had been talked about. We'd be paying, say, cash, but I don't know.
Well, I, I think.
Well, we have cash to pay for.
Well, no, no, I know, but I think there had been discussion about.
To your point, and I think.
We didn't do the spreadsheet though.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I understand the process. The, to your point, Brad, these are major projects. This isn't a maintenance issue. And these are things that need to be identified so that we can plan for it.
Maintenance and new projects are two different things.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm saying this is not like, you know, a bridge failed and we have to go replace it really quick and it's something that's an emergency. These are things that are planned, been out there for a while, and, and that's part of what the whole push has been, is getting, I need a project priority list. And that, and I think thi- this is an item that we, I anticipate, I will certainly be talking about on Monday in our joint, our joint meeting because we're talking about that project list, this project and others. And so, you know, that is something that we need to continue to push for.
Well, I would say then, to me as a counselor is helpful, you look at the spreadsheet and then when we have a monthly meeting, we come to highway. Give us a heads up, we're gonna need two million dollars next year. We're gonna need five million dollars two, two months from now. That would be more helpful than, than the spreadsheet as far as a, a monthly.
I think there is a disconnect, maybe to some degree, right, on what is being discussed in finance to a degree. I will say that both of, of the discussion topics at hand now have been, we were updated in, in the summer of last year. So before budget hearings, so we knew that they were.
But they weren't plugged in anywhere.
I don't, I can't attack, Brad, you'd have to.
No, at the time, they were not submitted as. No, at the time, they were not submitted as part of the twenty-two budget, they were mentioned in the budget cover letter, and then we talked about a budget hearing.
We did.
And then in midsummer, around July, I think there was an update given to everyone that mentioned this project as well.
And thirty-seven was one hundred percent in discussion.
Right.
But the two seventy-six, to your point, we, we've got to get our hands around some of these commitments so that we are putting together the best fiscal plan for the county.
That's what I'm looking for, because we have come up with, in the finance community, we've come up with a funding mechanism for thirty-seven.
Yeah.
For hundred and forty-six in Allisonville.
Pleasant Street.
You know, these ones that they've identified, this is coming down the track, so we plug it in and try to work out a smooth, or as smooth as it can get, uh, way of paying for these projects, and I'm not against the project.
No, I'm.
But at some point, get it, I don't know, some way of knowing what's dropping in the next three months or the next.
Well, I, I believe the spreadsheet that he does put together is year by year, and it does have a breakdown of when those costs when you come on board, um, I've taken that information and I've tied it in with some of the vertical projects that we're looking at, whether it's expansion, or, you know, expansion to the Justice Center, to the, um, to the, uh, prevail and all the other aspects included on, and I've been sending that back in, and I've been continually adding the projects that I know that the highway is saying, hey, these are in there, so that when we have that discussion on Monday.
Okay.
We have, we have a complete list that we can talk from.
Do you have a handle on what other projects not budgeted for will be coming to us this year?
Um, I'm not sure I can answer that a hundred percent, I know what I have been told and I'm aware of, but are there other things? I don't know, it could be a two hundred and ninety-sixth street that pops up.
There, um, this spreadsheet, which we discuss in the highway committee meeting, that like the Prairie Lakes, there's seven hundred thousand at the Prairie Lakes, hundred forty-six, that's going to need council assistance, and that's for next year, twenty twenty-three, so.
So you got, you got nothing?
There's oranges here.
Yeah, well, you look at it and just tell me, you got nothing else on your list for twenty twenty-two?
There's, there's, there's four items that need funding, um, in some capacity this year, uh, these two that we had in front of us right now, we also have Pleasant Street, which will be in December, right?
Pleasant Street is in September.
September, sorry, thank you.
That's funded out of Major Bridge.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the four that are identified on that spreadsheet.
Is eligible for Major Bridge.
Yeah, so we've, we've already contemplated that.
Well, I'm just trying to answer your question, and the fourth one was the, uh, was the Alice, Allisonville and.
Hundred and forty-six in Allisonville, which is currently in December.
Right, but outside of what finances are already looked at?
Those, those, this spreadsheet has been shared with Reuters, and, and it should be a part of our, our plan.
Any other questions, discussion?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm fully biting on that. So, the answer is no, we shouldn't get any more multimillion dollar projects dropped on us.
Well, that's, that's what I think Sue referenced from a highway perspective, Brad, are there any other projects that you know coming in twenty twenty-two of, of any significance that are already budgeted for?
No, not, not of those kind of magnitude of dollars, there may be some small things here and there, for example, we were just awarded two projects in the end dot letting, so we may need to start a little bit of work on, uh, some engineering, it's not going to be huge amounts of money though, and that should be coming out of a, a normal process of, you know, mu, of a normal budget, in other words.
So that those would be absorbed, that the early engineering would be absorbed by your.
You know, on this, if we were alerted ahead of time, I think Brad told me that the county attorney was not too much in favor, we could have bombed this out of TIF.
We did have that, we did have that discussion, Mike, with, or Brad, with Mike Howard.
I know, but I'm on the county council and I'm not privy to all his conversations.
It wasn't sufficient to support it, was basically what he had said, right?
That's what Brad told me, I did not have that conversation, but it seemed like a exact reason you had the TIF in the first place, right?
Agreed.
Infrastructure improvements?
That's what's, design.
That's why it's good to know ahead of time. Let's, let's vote.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think use every bit of cash that's available everywhere to get it down to.
Robin, that's a great point. Um, there's nothing to vote on this, um, we, we're made aware of it, um, we need to put this on the next, uh, council for, I guess, for approval.
And where from?
Yeah, and where from.
Is it going to finance then? Monday, or just prioritize in finance, says, here's what we're going to.
Well, fi, but finance is going to have to ensure that they meet, right, before, right?
We're meeting on the eighteenth, I think.
Okay, so is that set then? Okay.
Just, just to let you know, I think it's.
No, he, he's got to have this, he's on a timetable.
Right, yeah, I thought he had.
April fourteenth to put together some kind of additional appropriation to make the May letting, according to the timeline.
So he needs to know what.
He's going to do it right now.
So, 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 so you've got the, the money in the, um, the TIF.
Yep, eighty-seven thousand.
Seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
In the eighty-seven, and so what Brad needs to know is where you want the difference paid, which is like one point nine million.
Brad, I, I said on the ARPA meeting, did we approve the million three?
You did not, you did not approve that.
No, we talked about this after.
None of the ARPA projects that I submitted for were approved.
Okay, I'm going to throw that into the next batch, maybe we can get it out of the last five million, as long as, what, eh, so you, you've got to have funds identified, but you won't start paying the bill for quite some time?
It's in the May letting, so we, within thirty days typically, we would get an invoice from N dot.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
So he'll, he'll advise it before the fourteenth?
So out of the ARPA funds?
Yeah.
Is there enough left in this year's?
There's five left, isn't there?
Now, you got about one point four.
Oh, because the other will come.
Because that's, you know, I thought five was left for next year.
Oh, you mean out of, out of what we actually got sitting in there?
Yeah.
So what you have now, you have one point four, or you can do his one point three if you wanted.
Okay.
But then you still have to come up with another six hundred thousand.
Right.
We need to have the money set aside for this project, eh, when, when will we be paying for it?
Probably within thirty days of the May fifth letting.
I don't see where it could come right away other than rainy day.
So we, we could, we could, we could.
Just take it out of rainy day.
Just take it out, let's move on.
Do you want to use the TIF to the max, which is?
Yeah, yeah, and then the ver, the remainder.
We need to clarify that, so.
I make a motion that we use the eight, eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ten left in cash, the TIF cash balance of seven hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents, and the remaining balance that's needed by the highway department for the Dunbar and hundred seventy, two hundred and seventy-sixth street to be out of rainy day.
Do you want to add any caveats that ARPA discusses?
If they don't pay the bill by the time we have the next meeting, we can do that, if, if we get enough votes.
Do you want to amend your?
I amend my motion to make a contingent on the ARPA committee not funding.
Right.
This project.
Right.
In a timely manner.
We have a second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
The only thing I would say there, we can't reimburse, see, that's, ARPA money cannot reimburse, they can't have already paid it.
I understand.
Okay?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brad, can you hold that check for a while?
Yeah, I, I think N dot would actually let us do that if we asked them to.
Okay.
This.
All right ahead.
The second project for discussion is one that we have had discussion on, um, and it's the hundred and forty-first street, state road thirty-seven interchange project, uh, as part of the thirty-seven overall corridor, that one is now, as we stand, scheduled for the May letting as well, so the breakdown on that, uh, on the sheets I provided you, we still have a twelve million dollar, um, amount that we've discussed with Fishers for quite some time, uh, that would be our portion of that, again, after the May letting, we would probably be billed within thirty days for the twelve million dollars, that's assuming we get good bids.
Again, I had a conversation with Brad, so we have spoke about this, you all know about this.
Yeah.
He thinks, I thi, I think because he tells me this is our last payment, there may be miscellaneous change this come through, but of the forty-two million dollar cost overrun that we're eating half of, we've been paying in cash, this should be the last, so.
Last major big dollar.
Yeah.
It should be.
That's the, of the twelve, and there's also a seven hundred thousand for the Prairie Lakes signal.
Yeah, we, that's kind of the complimentary project that we've talked about at, uh, hundred forty-sixth street, Prairie Lakes, the seven hundred thousand, we've changed the scope of that, it was one point five, um, it's been changed to be a signalization project, not a roundabout, uh, that's not going to early twenty-three, so if you want to put that into this funding mechanism, that would be great, if not, we could try and budget it when we do our twenty-three budget.
Let's do that. Pay for what we got to pay for, put off what is absolutely necessary.
I would agree.
Put it in highway budget for twenty-three.
So may I like to make a motion?
I think we already, oh.
That's just a complimentary motion.
That was only on that seven, oh, seven.
Didn't, didn't Sue already?
No, she made it for hundred and forty-six, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um, um, we're going to continue with, uh, rainy day on that?
We didn't set aside that, uh.
Or is that already set aside?
Thirty-seven money in any, any special category, did we, Robin or not?
We have, but.
Nine point three million dollars.
So you have nine point three million in.
It's forty-nine oh seven.
So you still need two point seven.
Two point seven.
Did you hear that?
Two twelve.
Are you making the motion?
Uh, that's what I was about to do, and I was gonna motion out of rainy day.
Well, the two.
The two point seven to, to, to pay the diff, to get, and put it in there.
Right.
Put it into forty-nine oh seven.
I'm going to try and do this accurately, um, motion to approve, uh, to utilize the existing fund for the balance of, uh, for the nine point three million, for the, uh, intersection of a hundred and forty-first and thirty-seven overage, and the balance of two point seven to be pulled out of rainy day to fund the remainder, uh, for that project.
In forty-nine oh seven. Fund forty-nine oh seven.
That was my motion.
Second.
Thanks, Brad.
Any further discussion?
I did, I should do my due diligence and let you know that just the bidding environment today is a bit awkward, but this is the best that, uh, that Fishers and us have come up with, and it looks like it will be sufficient, but I can't tell what's going to happen when these things go to letting.
Is, and, and if, similarly to other conversations we've had up here, if that date were to move, um, and we have the opportunity to use a different funding mechanism to maybe do it, we can talk about that on Monday, would that something we'd be able to replace those dollars, as long as it's not spent?
If what date was to move?
The bidding date, the letting date.
Yeah. Right now, scheduled for May.
I don't know of any other, other pools of money that we would use.
Well, I'm just saying, we're going to have a conversation on Monday, this is a major project, is this something that we want to also discuss on Monday for projects? We've got it funded, we've got a mechanism for doing it, but is this something that we want to revisit in front of that larger group?
That's up to you, I, I have no feeling on where we're going to.
Well, the motion, and I got a second from Steve, so.
Any further discussion?
Or from Brad, sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item F has been removed from the agenda, scratched, this time, uh, additional appropriations, reductions and transfers, I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Item A is fund one thousand general requesting six hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, amount available is thirty-two million four hundred and thirteen, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Assessor is the first item on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on, the clerk has a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioners have an additional. Sorry? You sure can, come up, please. It's our county clerk.
Yeah, no, um, th, these are two of the people who replaced two of my retirees, and so they, uh, one of them went, uh, came on board for her new position on March the fifth, and the other one as of Monday, and I would like to ask if it could be retroactive to that time, I mean, the, the, uh, order book clerk, uh, new advisor has been serving for a month, and these are the adjustments for their pay, which is a lot less than what the, two people who left. Do what?
The beginning dates of their employment in that.
The beginning dates of their, uh, transfer to, I, I transferred people within the departments.
Yes.
And, um.
And so you're making a request to make them retroactive?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on, item three, commissioners additional thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, uh, it says here on our agenda, the council approved this position in March.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a corner, one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Court administration has a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item six is, uh, ISS, and Chris is here, do we need Chris to come up for the one forty-four amendment?
I'm motion approved.
Second.
I just want to say, Ken, we can continue to help you on there, your application process, that was a good thing for ISS, and also Claire, that was the ISS department that helped her out too, just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, so we can, we can continue to work with you and make things better.
You guys remember when Al Patterson used to come in here looking for additional appropriations and wore his crutches?
Oh, man.
Did he meet with you this afternoon, is that why he's got the?
Or casters?
It's got snaps on it.
Thank you, Brad, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, the one forty-four is the additional position for ISS, I discussed that in the work session, um, I guess earlier this year, uh, prior to the decision on the ERP, I kind of said it was, depending on which direction we went, we would, we would have to add either one staff or possibly more than one staff, and so this is, this is the direction we went, and so I'm asking for one additional staff person, I talked to Robin about that, as to whether or not we should try to get that person on board sooner rather than later, and I think we agreed that that would be ideal, is to get them in on the ground floor with this project, um, long term, they'll serve as a business analyst in the ISS department and provide frontline support for, for Workday and, and reporting and, and that type of stuff.
Motion to approve, did we already get one?
I think so.
Okay, sorry, just making sure, my, my mistake.
And then the additional was just missed with the larger ERP request that we made in the previous month, um, it's for the project management services through Barry Dunn, that is all tracked on the spreadsheet, we'll track that as expenses come in if there's ever a question about that, but we simply forgot to include that on that request previously.
So the first item is A that we have a motion to second on. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the second part of Chris's request is an additional for the five hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
What?
So moved, as he said, it was already something we had budgeted for, just got missed.
I understand.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I do have one question for you, everyone else struggles to hire technical people, how is it that you're able to do that?
Good salesperson, I guess, I, you know, the, the, the person we just hired, I think we were extremely fortunate to have him, I. The, the, the person we just hired, I think we're extremely fortunate to have, and I, I think he's worked with Robin and Dawn already some, and, and we got a lot of applicants for that particular position. Um, we are having trouble hiring and filling another position we have open, so it's not like we just get them all, but, uh, but, uh, we got very few applicants for another position, so it's, it just depends.
Hidden mess.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, moving on our agenda, item seven is the sheriff. Uh, there's a one forty-four amendment, um.
Motion to approve both one forty-four amendments.
And the special pay?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And for clarification, that was for both?
Yes, it was for both. Moving on, item eight is the surveyor, they have a one forty-four amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Probation also has a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Get caught up here on all this paper. Okay. Item nine is probation, there's also a one forty-four amendment. We just did that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Moving on to item B, eleven twenty-two is project income, they're requesting fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is community corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The last item on this page is item C, it's Fund Eleven Seventy-six, point eleven seventy-three, MVH, Motor Vehicle Highway. It's restricted, requesting a hundred and one thousand, and the amount available for that appro- appropriation is one million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Ken?
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Um, this is for, uh, handling the increase in costs that have occurred for the Batumis pavement and asphalt work that we're doing as far as the maintenance. And so this is covering, covering the, covering the inflationary and escalation that's occurred since we budgeted for this work.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. The last page of our agenda here, item D, Fund Twelve Nineteen, it's park and recreation transfer of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item E, Fund Twelve Twenty-two, it's Communications, one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item F on your agenda, it's Fund Four Nine Zero Five, it's digital ortho- photography, uh, requesting seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item G, it's Fund Four Nine Zero Seven, it's a highway, it's a special transfer of a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion?
This was a, uh, handling an error that occurred, the money was appropriated, I believe, to the, the wrong line item, so we're just moving it to the other line item.
That's correct. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item H on your agenda, Fund Eight Nine Zero Eight. It's FEMA Public Assistant Grant, they're requesting five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item I on your agenda is Fund Ninety-One Forty-One for physical year nineteen, it's Community Crossing, Community Crossings grant funding requesting sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in.
Just, just discussion is like, people know, this, the, the work is complete, we're moving money out of this fund, uh, back into its original place. Closing it out.
Yep, just to transfer.
And that'll be the same with the next one as well, when we get to it.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And again, Fund Nine One Five Five, uh, FY twenty, Community Crossings Grant Fund requesting a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Fund Ninety-One Sixty-Six, Twenty Twenty-One, Problem Solving Court Drug, requesting appropriation of fifty cents.
I don't know about that.
It's falling out of the sky, Brad.
That's on, like, right up your alley.
Fifty cents a dollar pretty soon, it's two million dollars.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was a close one. Item L on your agenda, it's Fund Ninety-One Seventy, it's the Veterans Court Grant, they're requesting forty-nine thousand dollars, and the amount available for the appropriation is forty-nine thousand.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item M, it's Fund Ninety-One Seventy-One, it's the Adult Guardianship, requesting a hundred thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And before we go on to announcements, I would like to have Connor Sullivan come forward, maybe give us a little bit of clarity.
Baker's Corner.
On Baker's Corner. Thank you for coming, Connor.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Uh, sorry again about the confusion for the petition on your guys' agenda. Uh, we worked some things out with some of the state agencies, so it'll be a resolution first before you guys in the near future, and the petition will be down the road. That being said, there is something I wanted to discuss quickly, and that is, um, at the last commissioners' meeting, we said that, we had the, uh, the Fishers gave us the authority to advertise for a BOT for this project. There are several benefits to that, one is.
Can you just say what that is?
It's a build-operate transfer, sorry, it's a, it's a form of procurement. The get, the, there's a few nice things, but two that I'll quickly mention, and we'll go over more Monday at the joint meeting, but one is the guaranteed max price, so we don't have to come back and say, hey, the project is going to cost X amount more dollars. The second part is the, uh, benefit that you get of the guaranteed timeline. So with that being said, we, uh, put out the note, public notice for it, and we initially thought there'd only be maybe four, um, developers that would be interested in, um, submitting a proposal for, for this. However, I think we've received interest from over thirty or so plus, um, companies that want to have questions, a Q and A session about it and whatnot. Um, so that being said, it's not anything that we're legally required to do, but we did think it'd be best to have an RFPQ, um, selection committee. Marty Westler, who is our, uh, head design and, uh, kind of doing the program management for this project, um, him and I, we've talked to, uh, Dan Stevens, he'll be the representative for the commissioners. We'll have CJ Taylor, who's our planning director, he is a licensed operated, or licensed, uh, wastewater facility treatment plant operator, and so we figured it'd be good to have him on there, because part of the proposals we'll receive might have operation portions of, for the, the, the district. And the third person we were hoping to get is a member of the council. Uh, we do have a recommendation for you guys, um, our thought initially is, uh, Councilman Alexander, uh, due to his, uh, experience in the construction industry. What you're going to be looking through this is all the proposals, seeing what it, what the, the prices are accurate, whether the timeline is something that's accurate or possible, or, um, is, uh, stuff like that. But majority of the potential or future regional district that we are going to create is in, um, Councilman Alexander's, uh, district, too. So between his, uh, um, being elected official from the area, construction, uh, background, uh, we believe that would be, uh, an excellent addition to it. The, uh, proposals will be received by the county on April twenty-second, and we have about a month to go over that, uh, which will be guided by myself and Marty Westler, helping them create a scoring matrix, which will ultimately be, they will come to a recommendation to provide, uh, provide to the ARPA committee, um, you guys and the commissioners, uh, at about a month after the April twenty-second, uh, the proposal deadline. There's, like I said, this is not a legal requirement for the BOT process, just something we thought that would help, uh, spur more competitive process, um, and have more, uh, so every elect, every body of government is representative, plus, uh, a member of the county, um, employees as well. Like I said, so you guys don't have to decide necessarily now, I just wanted to bring it for you guys, so you guys can discuss it, but that April twenty-second deadline is coming up short, uh, quickly.
If I could just, real quickly, I, I know that when, was, I was, first approached with this opportunity, obviously, the first thing I thought of is this is representative of the council, so it needed to come in front of the whole group. If we look back at the similar process that we went through for the garage, um, and that one, I had, uh, I had people that I knew that I had worked for, and so I abstained myself from being part of that process, but supported at least from a, from a review of, of the proposals as far as giving someone a matrix information, what I would, how I would look at things. So, um, regardless of, of how this council wants to move forward, I'm, I'm more than happy to serve in that capacity or support someone else that wants to serve on the council's behalf.
I, I, yeah, I would, I'd make a motion that Ken's our representative.
I would second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Don't let us down.
Thank you, and there'll be more information about the project, uh, at your guys' joint meeting, too, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Connor, I appreciate that. Um, before we go on further to announcements, uh, I do have one other item. Before our meeting, Dawn handed out the agenda for Monday's, uh, nine AM meeting. And if there's anything that council needs to add, this would probably be the best time.
The two highway items that we talked about are, are actually on the agenda.
The ones we already funded?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll move on now, sheriff?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Council attorney?
Nothing for the group.
Madam moderator?
I have nothing.
This time, we will adjourn, thank you.